The board is now in work session to hear three complaints that name the board or individual board members as the respondent. Welcome, everyone. Board members present are Alicia Hayes, Gordon Layford, Judy Newman, Kirti Hasidja Kaufman, Michelle Shu, and myself, Maya Rabasa. With us as well is Superintendent Andy Dye. You all should have received an email with the three complaints that we are going to look at today. We'll do them in chronological order. And I just want to remind everyone that we can refer to the board members, but we do not refer as respondents, but we do not refer to the complainants by name. So the first complaint is one that was issued. The complaint under this section of, are you making a complaint about a specific staff person? It says yes, and then it lists Maya Rabasa, Gordon Layford, Andy Dye, and the 4J board. For record-keeping purposes, the only staff member on that list is actually Andy Dye. The rest of us are not staff. So you have this all in front of you. This is a complaint that is alleging that we failed to protect our fellow board member, Laurel O'Rourke, from serious threats to her and her family's safety by not continuing to not implement recommendations provided by security. And I open it up. You have, does everybody have access to those in front of them? Yeah. Okay, great. In that case, I, this one does not have a lot of detail. So I, and I know that you got it a few days ago, so I'm hoping that, and a few weeks ago as well. So I'm hoping that we all look at them. It, one thing to note is that the complainant is writing the complaint in support of Laurel O'Rourke and would like the board to provide mediation and paid security for 4J board members. So I don't know. I'll, I'll open it up to the rest of the board to ask questions or raise issues of discussion. Judy?
I think I had a question when I was reading it. Can, is it permissible? I guess it must be. It sounds like the complaint is filed on behalf of someone else. So I, I guess that seemed unusual to me, and I don't know if there's a policy about that or just, yeah.
Our complaint policy, K L A, K L A R, yes, and stipulates that anyone can file a complaint on behalf of only themselves or their children. And I assume by children, they mean, or their student is the language, I believe. So those who wish to have guardianship over. And they see Andy nodding, so I, I believe that's correct. So that, that is a, a good point. She says in support of, not on behalf of, but I guess it's up to us to determine if those are synonymous. Alicia, and then Gordon.
The correct one. Because, yes. Because also type of complaint is listed discrimination or harassment based on legally protected characteristic. And she has checked race, or ethnicity, and has checked bullying, harassment, intimidation, cyberbullying. She's under line 03. So I just want to make sure we're all looking at the same type of things.
Gordon?
I guess apart from the question of standing or whatever for the complaint, that I know we're going to go with the security issues later. I think that the security ask for here has been provided. In, in terms of mediation, I, I don't know if this will be a response to this complaint per se, but I feel like if we're going to preserve mediation, that's, that's always a requirement. I would support that. I might be set from saying this is a response to a complaint, but.
Kirti?
I kind of had the same question, which was, I know we were in support of providing measures this last year. So I guess I was curious what is still being provided and what has not been and what is currently under the state. I mean, I would presume that we would want to keep everybody as safe as possible for experiencing threats. Either person and other piece of it. I was just curious, I know what, we had some conversations, I know last year that we were taking care of it. I was just curious on what the current status is of those measures.
So I, I can start, maybe Andy, you can fill in any holes. My understanding is that all of the, it says paid security, so it doesn't indicate exactly what. But all of the recommendations regarding the, the security for, for the board member's home was put in place with some additional that weren't even on that list. So we, we have gone above and beyond, and those are security measures, but they're not, you know, like a paid person per se. They're, they're, they're more infrastructure to the, to the person's space. Is that correct, Andy?
That's right.
The only thing I will add is, in terms of the question of mediation, at various points that has been brought up, and it's our, it's this particular board member who has declined that. So I appreciate that the community member is requesting it, that, that offer, I believe, on the part of the board and the district remains open at all times. Michelle?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that your request mediation change to not per se to file complaints, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just have.
Alicia?
Thanks. So as I look at this complaint and see the type of complaint it is, and then pick up our racial harassment policy, which we passed last March, because I believe that's what we should be looking at because of the boxes that were marked and not trying to figure out what they mean by what they've said. Because part of our policy, one, it says board members are covered, so we have to look at that. Two, it says you can file anonymously. And three, it says that if there is racial harassment is claimed, for lack of a better word, that we shall investigate. And shall mean shall. It doesn't mean, hey, use your best judgment, whatever. So I believe according to our policy, as it's written out, you know, we just made a little side note, I think we should clean up this policy that we need to investigate this. It is a complaint about racial harassment, as well as another complaint about racial harassment, and our policy says we will investigate.
Judy?
I think that's a good, oh, sorry.
I think that's a good point. I just wanted to follow up on the mediation piece. I, did we specifically offer mediation around the security? A topic to Laurel? I wasn't aware or I missed that. I know we talked about doing mediation as a board, and I don't know where it went. So I just wanted to know what I missed there. I probably missed something, so.
I don't know if I have the answer to that question. Do you, Andy?
Mediation regarding security?
Well, someone said we offered mediation and it was turned down. And I think this is specifically around mediation and paid security. It sounds to me it's around disagreements about enough security. I, I don't know. I'm just asking what kind of mediation we offered.
She was offered two 12-week sessions of coaching with the idea that there would be mediation and problem solving. I forget the name of the company off the top of my head. I think that's the board, the, the individual mediator coach.
And then mediation with the board?
It could have been.
Okay. I, I was aware of the request for coaching, but not mediation, that's all.
Was that, was that offered in writing? Mediation, or was it verbal? I just wanted the investigation.
I, I think that there were emails back and forth between board members that would reflect invitations for conversation to try to problem solve. And then there were conversations that I'm not committed to writing, but I, I think you're right, Alicia, that this is where a, a more full investigation would be.
I will clarify that I did ask verbally in person, and there was no interest.
I'm going to add myself to the queue and just point out that this is, uh, this is saying that this is, this is hap, the complaint is predicated on continuing to feel unsafe in one's own home. And then afterwards, it says after serious threats were made against her and her family, threats were made on social media against her and her family. And my understanding is that we did pay for site security to look into threats made to this board member, and that none were found. Is that right? Andy?
At that point in time, that is correct.
So an element of, of investigation pertaining to the context of the invest, of the complaint has been conducted, if not under the name of the complaint, under the name of safety. Gordon?
I, I also have questions, clarification. I appreciate what you raised, Alicia, that absolutely everything needs to be investigated. And what I'm trying to figure out is what would the scope of an investigation be? And part of my question is, is my understanding, maybe it's wrong, my understanding is that in terms of home security at board member Laurel's home, that we, we offered all board members, the consultant could come out and assess the home and say, here's what security improvements there should be. She said she wanted to do that, the consultant did that, and that everything that was recommended has been done and paid for by the district. And that's the only, the only thing, I, I, you know, when this says provide paid security, I don't know, that sounds like, I don't know somebody needs actual, actual people, actual staff that would be at one's home. I haven't heard that. I'm not sure that that was ever asked for, whether by a board member or, I know it wasn't part of consultants. The only disagreement that I'm aware of is that security takes place in this building. So I'm, I agree with you to investigate. I'm trying to get clear. I don't know if you have more thoughts, Alicia, on what would the questions of our investigation be? Or anybody else, somebody else's thought?
Can I just go, my Houston said, so what's stumping me, or what makes me say we need to go further, is this excess on discrimination or harassment based on legally protected characteristics, and that is marked race and ethnicity. And then it says harassment, intimidation, and cyberbullying are underlying. We get a number of choices. When I read our policy, it really is an attempt to say, if somebody says they've been discriminated, this, our policy says we shall investigate. So I'm not really looking at that and then saying, how does it match up back here? Because I, there was, you know, we were saying to this person, well, you've got to make a case on, on that side of this, or on the executive age of this floor. What, where our policy says is, we have that responsibility, we'll take that responsibility, we shall investigate, and that's where I'm going from. You know, maybe if these ones hadn't been marked, I would have said, we, we want to talk about security. But those are marked, and that's what our policy says. And we have to, and I appreciate you, Kirti, again. You live by example. It's not comparable, certainly not something, you know, it's, it's been caused. We don't know what exactly we'll come with it, but that's the way this policy is written.
Gordon?
So just, so just to understand, I think I understand now. You were talking about the investigation would include potential harassment, intimidation, and cyberbullying in addition to the security services. Okay, thanks, first.
To clarify, the investigation would be to determine whether Maya Rabasa, Gordon Layford, Andy Dye, and the whole board harassed, intimidated, and cyberbullied. Right?
I think, I think with any investigation, that's where you start, because that's what I can glean from this. Where it leads, I don't know.
Right. But it's not, it's not to determine if other people, complaint is against us, it's not against the community. It's against Andy, myself, Gordon, and the whole board, so really all of us.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I just want to be mindful of the time, but I also don't want to cut anybody off if they have questions or comments. All right. If no one does, then we'll move along to the second complaint, which was received on March 8th, 2023. This complaint is, this complaint comes in in a different form. Okay, wait, never mind, I'm finding it. This one comes in through our Let's Talk, so it's a little tricky, and it says name of staff member, and it says Maya Rabasa. But again, I'm, I'm not a staff member, but that's just for clarification purposes. This is using our Let's Talk app, so I don't know if it has the chance for distinctions there. Um, again, folks have had access to this for some time, so I assume you've looked through it. This one also alleges bullying, harassment, intimidation, cyberbullying, or hazing not based on a legally protected characteristic, discrimination or harassment based on a legally protected characteristic. And then it says to check, and that would be race or ethnicity and retaliation. And it alleges misuse of 4J board's policy. This is referencing two different board meetings where the meeting was adjourned shortly before the last agenda item of new items on the board and the, on the agenda. And then the second one I'm looking is the meeting. I think, I, I, I think that might be the only one of somebody else. I apologize. Yeah. So it's regarding the November, oh, I'm sorry, no, it's right there. The second references to our, that was the November 16th meeting, the second references to our March 1st board meeting when a recess was called. So I'll pass it off to anybody who has questions or comments regarding this. Alicia?
I would say this also falls under our policy and that we need to investigate. And it's the, and I don't know, because I know you're going to ask me that. I don't know if it's the whole board or just a few people on the board, because the form is hard to read. But I, again, it falls under racial harassment policy attachment, and so I think we need to investigate.
Yeah, the form is a little tricky. It says it's about a specific person, and it lists me, and then it asks who was involved, and it lists the entire board and the superintendent. So, I mean, if our inclination is to do an investigation, then it probably doesn't need us to spend time discussing it here. I, on the other hand, I think if we wanted to, we could look at our resolution. We could look at Robert's rules. We could look at the meeting and determine if what is categorically disruptive was what in fact occurred on those meetings, during those meetings. But like you say, Alicia, those boxes are checked. Gordon?
I, I agree with Alicia on both of these. I think our policy is, is pretty, there's, there's nothing left to interpretation in terms of policy. I do think the question, like, what does investigation mean? You know, couldn't mean hiring an outside investigator in this one of the board. And I feel like we have to have a, if we decide to investigate this, same as with the previous one, which I would support, then at some point we'd decide, so what does that mean? Or are we going to have a meeting where we all sit and look at the tape and read Robert's rules? Are we going to get an outside person to do that and report back to us? So I feel like the processes, I might be willing to choose, but I don't, I would also think in terms of tonight, that there's a question under the policy that these have to be investigated.
Judy?
I would think when we, whatever action we take to vote on these, we should be specific if we're hiring an outside investigator or another method. So I think we sort of have to have that discussion now. I don't think we can decide that later, because I think that's relevant to the decision. I mean, when would we have that conversation? Is that, so it seems like we should go with the complaint. And I would just say, it is confusing that hopefully the investigator will sort that out to know who we're looking at. Is it one person or the whole board, the superintendent, by going deeper?
Yeah, I mean, looking at this form, I, I would think that the question of who was involved means who was, who was there and who was part of the process. But the, it is very distinctly making a complaint about a specific person. And obviously, not a staff person, but I think we all understand the intention behind the complaint wasn't to mislabel any staff. Alicia?
So if we, just throwing this out, because that's a good question, actually, thought about next steps. So if we decide as a board to investigate these, would a process be, if this is, you know, we're, we're, this is new with this policy, it's a little different than I think we intended or expected, but would a possibility be that we ask someone, maybe superintendent Dye, to help us figure that out, whether it's people who do procurement or, or if that's so thorough, to come back with like three names of investigators that we, then as a board, can decide who we go with? So, and then we as a board can, I mean, unfortunately, I would have to look at our policy and have to look at these complaint forms and have them help us figure out where you should be investigating.
Um, not to jump back to the last one, but if we go that route, then we're going to need to schedule a work session between now and our next board meeting, because that one was filed on February 17th. And if we don't select an investigator until March 3rd, we probably won't be able to, to finish this up by the 17th or even less than the 15th or so of, of March, so. Judy?
We could conceivably say we would like, I mean, the motion could be we want an outside investigator who is experienced at investigating racial and harassment things, and maybe then leave it to the district to hire someone? Do we, I mean, do we need to come back with three names and vote? I would be okay with that if we made some parameters. It's another way rather than coming back. Just a thought.
Okay, I guess we can discuss that when people make a motion. Michelle?
I find it surprising that we have sat through these meetings and we have interacted as a board through these incidents. And without the edgy training that we had prioritized last year, that has not occurred, that as a board, we are not able to discern whether something is a racial, racial incident or not, or whether racial harassment policy is being used properly or not. I find this very concerning.
So.
Alicia?
If you think the policy isn't being used correctly, I'd be happy there. But I was surprised when I read through it. And I actually asked a couple of friends that do policy work to read through it and see if it was as prescriptive as I was reading it. Michelle, so that's, I, I agree with you, but I think we would know, we might know, we might have a feeling, we might not, always and completely. But this is our policy. And if you've got another idea, I'm happy to hear it. But when I look at it, that's what I'd be, you know, when I, my peers look at it, that's what they write.
I'm, I think up to the queue, I just want to, I think that what we're circling around over and over and over is the word investigation. And, and I think that that's a really important conversation, and I don't mean to detract from the specific complaint. But if we are going to strictly define investigation as outside investigators, then, then that's going to be a very tricky thing for the district to handle considering the number of racial harassment complaints that, that we process. So Alicia?
I agree with you. I would not, we aren't setting the standard for schools or volunteers somewhere else. We're, this is because we are the board in the situation, and we would put to an outside person. I would, and thank you, Maya, because I want to make it clear, I would not assume that this policy says you have an outside person. I think we're just caught in that place because of our position. Thanks.
Totally agree with her, with you there. And, and in line with that, we also need to look at revising our policy regarding the processing of complaints against board members, especially board members by other board members. Do we have any other questions or comments?
All right, with that, we move on to the third complaint to process tonight. This complete, it's a complaint filed on behalf of the person themselves, and it also alleges bullying, harassment, intimidation, cyberbullying, or, or hazing not based on a legally protected characteristic. This complaint issued against board member Laurel O'Rourke. I know you have it in front of you, so I'm not going to read through everything on here. There's a significantly long attached document that outlines the concerns raised in this complaint. But the bulk of it is about an interaction, a prolonged interaction between the complainant and Laurel O'Rourke on social media. We can jump into details as we discuss it. If folks want to look it up, this one specifically references our policy BFF. Alicia, and then Judy?
Oh, I just, so I have this one-dimensional page that just is a snapshot. And I'm wondering if we're always on this. And I'm wondering if Laurel was on this website, if other board members also have more detail because they are on the website. So Michelle's saying, no, she's not part of this group. Lauren, you're not part of the group?
I don't know. I haven't seen the stuff that's referenced here.
So you're not part of the, what's the group?
Alicia, to clarify, I am part of that. I am in that group.
So you've, you've got a little more detail you've seen it.
I believe that Gordon is in that group. However, Laurel has Gordon blocked on Facebook, so he can't see the interaction side from Laurel's comments.
So I just want to put a pin in that fact that we've got three board members on a closed group talking about school board items. I fear, I'm just worried about that, so I say, bye, I don't want to talk about it tonight. I want to put a pin in that, and I want to get some legal advice. Thanks.
Sorry, I just, I had just stepped out for a quick bathroom break. Alicia, could you just repeat that real quick? I really, I apologize.
So my point is that we have three board members on a Facebook page that is closed with 198 people on it discussing, as is stated in our complainants' complaint form, discussing like-minded school board items. If, I'm just wondering if we as school board members should be participating in that. So I just want to put a pin in that, you're be
Got it.
certifying, and then we can come back to that at a good time, but I don't want to lose that. Thanks.
Okay, got it. I just, I, I just cut the last end of that, so I just wanted to check. Thanks.
Just to clarify, membership doesn't always mean participation, so.
I appreciate that. And the Acel you call our social media, the new town hall. So I think, or city square, or, so I think we need to be aware of that, and it's all kind of new and unique and new. And so I think clarity is always helpful.
Absolutely, and I think that that magic number of three is also helpful and important to note that at no time could there be a forum and violation of any public meetings rules.
I appreciate it. I also worry about surround meetings with something like that. Thanks.
Gordon?
I mean, just briefly on the last point, I think both of three listening to me at any event, whether it's in person or, you know, any school event or anything like that, but also just to clarify for myself, as I said, I was not, I had not seen these conversations. I was not any part of this. In terms of getting back to the complaint itself, I don't, you know, we're not, I don't know where either board member or board is or the complainant is, but this to me feels like something that we weren't hearing if they were, if a complainant is I don't know, we need an outside investigator, but I feel like we need more consideration than just us sitting around here, so I would if their, if the complainant is willing, I would go to a hearing, and I think this is particularly I believe that we're allowed to say that this is an employee, and I think that raises particular issues without making, like, that's another dimension to sorry.
Yeah, I think that the fact that this is an employee and that it was taken into our school board meeting, which is a public space by board member O'Rourke, also shifts the conversation outside of just that group and into the space of our meetings. Um. Gordon, it's really hard to hear y'all. I don't know if you're doing a better job, but were you suggesting an investigation? Is that what you said?
I suggested a hearing.
Okay. Alicia?
So I appreciate that I want us to behave, you know, there's board member standard of conduct. What concerns me about a hearing is that it seems like we did not do that when we had another situation where board members, at least two board members, wrote a staff person and disagreed and were, what I felt were just, what I felt, my call, behaved disrespectfully to that person, maybe not in a large group where lots of people could read, but one-on-one. So maybe we have to be very careful about this. I would not support a hearing just because we have never done anything like that before. And I think, um, I, I just don't think it's warranted. And in this case, I, I would like us to not give the social media kind of bantering that I have been, I didn't participate in that. I would like that to not happen, but I don't think, I think if we do that, then we have to really look at where it's our past practice. And I would say our past practice has not been to do that, and not to do it just doesn't seem right.
Alicia, I guess I'm not sure what the task referred to is. Can you clarify that?
We talked about it in executive session, and I, I don't think I just would like to remind you, there was a video sent, and a couple of board members went up to the person sending the video, we didn't want to do about, uh, it was last year, so you literally not remember my, um, but I would say that that was inappropriate, and I believe there was settlement because of that.
Okay, Michelle?
Um. I think the point you're trying to make is that if you're not on social media, then you will maintain standards of conduct, and, um, there are board members who are on social media who also comply with those standards of conduct. And it is not binary that anyone on social media is, um, not complying to our policies and our standards of conduct. I, I just want to make clear that it's not a, um, it's not that anyone on, on social media is automatically, um, not, um, complying. This is a specific case where it's, um, it's outside of standards of conduct.
I appreciate that. I would never assume that, nor did I assume that.
Judy?
I just have a process question, because when we review others, can we as a board request a hearing, or does it have to be the complaint, the person giving the complaint, or the person who is being complained about? I mean, is that a tool that we have to recommend, or do one of them have to request it? That was my impression last time when a hearing was requested. It was by the person that was to receive the complaint.
So Judy, I, I think we're getting back into, you're sparking my memory, and I appreciate that. And we're getting back into possibly discussing things that were discussed in executive session. Um, but, um, which makes it really tricky for us to use that as a point of reference for this.
Well, the only point of reference is there are things that we can do. There are remedies we have in our hands, so I just want to ask in a general way, if that is a remedy we in fact have as a board?
It is, it is under our purview to decide to have a hearing. We can have a hearing. We can have an investigation. We can dismiss. We can take a course of action that we determine ourselves, whether it's a, you know, we've, we've issued letters of, of, of statements regarding our position with a board member. We can issue a statement of censure. There, there are options for us, and, and the hearing technically is our purview. Um, and without discussing that particular case and how it unfolded that, that fell under the realm of, of this being our purview. Gordon?
Um, I guess we're, we're on, I would like to ask, I don't know if it's the superintendent or the board chair, to reach out to the parties and see if they're interested in hearing. Obviously, I know it's a tool we have, we can't force anybody, we wouldn't force, we're not trying to force people to anything, but you know, essentially, we have an employee complaining about being mistreated by a board member, and we are legally the employer. If the employee in this case feels like they want to elaborate on this in a hearing, I don't know how we could say, no, we don't want to hear from you. We're just gonna make a decision without hearing from you. No, we couldn't, but I don't think we should. Thanks.
I just want to point out, we did that earlier this year, so let's say, don't tell me we can't do it.
Request for a hearing?
Yes.
That's nothing. I'm sorry. The only other thing that I would add to note in this particular complaint, if you have it in front of you, is the second to last paragraph, which, um, for me, makes me really uncomfortable in the sense that it, since it is an employee. And, and there's a sentence, there's the observations and evaluation of which are confidential between me and my supervising administrator, and to imply I was harmful to students of color, and again, to declare me a bigot, and she had quote-unquote the screenshots to prove it. There's intimidate and imply a threat about their position in the future. I think that's, that's an important part that, that isn't just, you know, our policy. Our policy says when using social media websites, board members will treat and refer to other board members, staff, students, and the public with respect. That, that feels that feels like it takes it to a pretty egregious level of, of being disrespectful, and I have, I do have concerns about, about that component of it. So I don't know, again, if that, maybe our conversation is about get another investigation. I did miss something that Gordon must have said, because Alicia's comment didn't quite, I didn't quite get it, so. Welcome to hybrid meetings and trying to chair it from my upstairs. Do we have any other? Gordon, you look like you want to say something? No? Okay, so I guess we will. We do not have these as items for action. We do need to make a decision regarding these, so I'm hoping Gordon or someone will add them at the beginning of the meeting so that we can have a discussion about the direction that we're taking these complaints, whether any of the above listed previously when Judy asked about the options. Gordon?
Sorry, just to be clear, are the timeline, are we on a timeline where all three of these need to be items of action later tonight?
Say that one more time.
Are we working on a timeline where all three of these complaints need to be decided as items for action in tonight's meeting?
March 13th is the last one.
Might it serve us to ask the complaintants for an extension, which we had done before?
My, your.
Say that one more time, Alicia.
It said, might it serve us to ask the complaintants for an extension?
Okay, so I think that we would have to make that decision in, in our public meeting, so we still need to add the items as items for action. And if we get a no from the complainants, then we'll just schedule a, another meeting between, that, that will allow us the timeline to take care of these within the, the complainants' rights by virtue of our policy. Judy?
I was just trying to check the date out for March 13th. Did you look that up? It's like three months up.
It would make it, probably just guessing off the top of my head with the month in front of us, approximately June 10th, June 15th.
Yeah, we might still have time without an extension.
Right, except if we've, we've, we've done one investigation as a board, and that one took many months. So as long as we have investigators who can turn around an investigation quickly. So that's, and if investigating the one from February 17th and they decline, we're gonna need to reconvene to make the decision to have an investigation, so February 17th might, it might be worth us making the decision tonight and then asking for an extension of the other show if needed. But keep in mind, if we ask for an extension of the other two, um, we probably want to finish it by the end of June. If not, we have to have a whole new board brought in to have the conversation and caught up to speed and all that stuff, so. I hesitate to have us move beyond the June timeline. But that's not up to me. I'm just pointing out the timeline here. So unless there's other questions, uh, somebody could add this for an item for action. We can ask to postpone, and our work session is now closed at 6:49, and we'll see you all back here at seven o'clock. Thank you.